Protocols of the meeting.
Okay, so convener, you're obviously here. councillor McCready.
Yeah, I'm here, thanks.
Bailey Scott.
I'm here.
Bailey McPherson.
Good afternoon, I'm here.
councillor Lynn.
Yes, I'm here.
councillor Short.
Here.
Bailey Sawyers.
I'm here.
And councillor Rendell, I believe you're substituting for councillor Ross.
Yeah, that's right, I'm here.
That's everybody present, convener.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr Many, could you go through the protocol, please?
Thank you, convener. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's scrutiny committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governments in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the meeting chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves it. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the meeting chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the meeting chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the meeting chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the meeting chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate? Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? No hands have been raised, convener, and there are no messages in the chat, so the meeting can proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Just before we proceed, I think, given the adverse weather that we're cities facing at the moment, I thought it was appropriate to say a few words in relation to the amount of staff and services that they're delivering out to people, some of the most vulnerable people in the city. I think it's a tribute to them. I've had constituents phone me, even some of my more serial complainers, saying what a great job people are doing. For them to have phoned and said, you know, well done, I think marks that up to an excellent, because they tend to complain about everything. However, it is a tribute to people. It's a very difficult task to get through a foot or a half of snow. And I think if we're managing out to deliver the best services that we can to people, the individuals that are doing that should be commended for it. Thanks for that. Okay, Tracy, if you'd like to move on to the first item.
Right, the first item on the agenda is declaration of interest. Does any member have any declarations?
You're not.
I'm not seeing anything, so that takes us on to item two. This is the risk management annual report and was previously submitted to the Policy and Resources Committee.
Is there any officer looking to make a comment on this report?
Pamela Redpath has indicated the wish to speak.
Okay, Pamela.
Thank you. I was just going to give an overview really on the report. So as you said, this report was presented to PNR on the twenty-first, fifth of January this year, and it's been remitted to the scrutiny committee because of its responsibility around risk for further consideration. The report contains the results of a review of the council's corporate risk register and provides a quick update on the risk management improvement plan as well. So with service level risk registers now in place across the organisation, the opportunity was taken to carry out this comprehensive review of the corporate risk register against the individual service level risk registers and also against the COVID-19 recovery risk register, which was submitted to PNR last year as well, and vice versa. The exercise identified three risks that the council believes should be escalated and considered for inclusion in the corporate risk register. One of them is fraud and corruption, another is Brexit, and the third one is property. Section six of the report provides more detail surrounding why it's believed that those risks should be escalated at this stage. In addition, it's recommended that some of the risk scores be amended in the corporate risk register, and the reasons for that are also noted in the report, this time it's section five. The amendments have been discussed and agreed with key staff throughout the council, including the CMT, Corporate Risk Management Working Group and Risk Champions, but obviously elected members, as those ultimately charged with governance, are being asked to approve the additions of the three risks and the revised risk assessments. Finally, section nine of the report provides an update on the implementation of the risk management improvement plan, which you'll see is more or less there. We have come a long way in our risk management journey in a positive way, and it is around e-learning, that's the main area that requires to be completed. There has been a lot of work carried out in that area, and I'm confident that by the end of this financial year, there will be an e-learning package in place for all staff. That will then be tailored to, you know, a more advanced e-learning package and hopefully incorporate some information around e-learning, around risk management into the induction programme as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
councillor McCready, you're looking to come in?
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. I mean, I think, I think the areas raised under paragraph six, I think, are to be welcomed, because I think, you know, sadly, we have had to deal with issues around fraud and corruption. Sadly also, we have to deal with Brexit, and I think we also, as I raised at City Development Committee the other week, I think there are real issues around property, which I think we do need to have a good look at. And I just wanted to draw attention to, I think it's on page eleven, in appendix C in the bottom box, which is around property. It says that the risks around property are office accommodation unable to house pre-COVID-19 staffing levels due to social distancing requirements. I think that's the case. I think I made that point at City Development Committee the other week as well, around the future of Dudop Castle. But I suppose my concern is that we had the report, the same night as the PNR committee looked at this report, we had a report about Dudop Castle that didn't really specifically or explicitly, I would say, mention the risk register. It does say something that corporate risk had been taken into account, but it doesn't, I think, you know, a sentence that tells us that corporate risk had been taken into account doesn't really tell us how the council is going to endeavour to deal with the issue around the COVID-19 property issues. So I've got two questions on this. One is, you know, what is the point of the risk register if it doesn't inform reports that go to other committees? And I think if he's going to tell me that it does, it needs to do it much more explicitly than that, than reports do at the moment. And secondly, you know, how can we have a situation where one report before us acknowledges that there's a risk that capacity in offices will be reduced, but somehow, I think we were unable, you know, we were able to declare a previously necessary office, an office that was in use till March 2020, surplus to requirements without really considering where the members of staff go. I mean, I know there's a paragraph in the report that went to City Development that tells us where they're, where they're going to go, but it doesn't really tell us where they're going to go, and it certainly doesn't explicitly deal with the risk that's raised in this, in this report. So I just wondered if officers have got answers to that?
Is there an officer on able to give councillor McCready an answer?
Yeah, happy to give an answer to that, convener.
Okay.
From my point of view, as the officer responsible for the report on Dudop Castle, it wasn't about the proposed closure of Dudop Castle, because that had been taken previous to that. And the relocation strategy for the council staff previously based in Dudop Castle was set out in that report. In terms of the risk highlighted quite properly within the risk register around COVID-19, that is a risk, but I would point out that all officers today are working from home. So the mitigation measure that has been put in place by colleagues in IT and elsewhere in the council is that there is an extensive opportunity for home-based working. So in the event that longer term, we need to reduce or increase office density from the current seven to ten, seven staff members, sorry, ten, ten staff members per seven desks, which is currently operated. If we were to require to increase that back again to eight, what we are finding is that most employers are anticipating that would be achieved by a hybrid working model, with staff spending some of the time working from home. Now, it is clear from the pandemic that some functions are well suited to home-based working, others are less so. So it will be for the individual directors and heads of service to carry out an assessment of which functions may be carried out from home part of the week. It is clear that it is popular with staff in some regards. So we certainly anticipate that in the event that we do require to drop perhaps back to a ratio of eight to ten, that can easily be accommodated with the remote working technology that has been put in place during the pandemic. And therefore, I felt no reason to revisit the decision which committee had taken previously in preparing a report on Dudop Castle.
You're backing again, councillor McCready?
Yeah, I mean, I don't necessarily disagree with what Mr Presswood said there. My point essentially is that, you know, it's not for officers to make those decisions. The decision should be made by the council, and as far as I'm concerned, I hear what Mr Presswood said, but as far as I'm concerned, that requires a report to the council, and I think, you know, I hope the chief executive is listening to that, because I think, I think we need, we need a report to the council that deals with this, because, I mean, Mr Presswood seemed to suggest that, that, that we might end up needing no offices there at the start of his presentation, his answer, because he was suggesting everybody could work from home. That's clearly not the case.
If I may respond to that, convener, that certainly wasn't what I intended to say. I did observe that today every member of staff is working from home, but later in my contribution, I highlighted that some functions were well suited to being based in house and others were not so much. And certainly, I have a very strong view that we will continue to require office accommodation. But the employers that are carrying out reviews of their office accommodations, some are concluding that they are suitable for fully home-based working, and many more are concluding that a hybrid model with a slightly reduced overall office space requirement is required, and others may conclude that they do need to increase the amount of office accommodation slightly. From my perspective, the council still has a surplus of property and a very tight financial position. And so as I bring back future reports on council accommodation, I envisage that my recommendation will be to continue to downsize the council's property portfolio. But as you observe, councillor McCready, it is for the elected members to take those decisions and not officers. And the decision to close Dudop Castle was taken by elected members. The decision to put Dudop Castle on the market at the last City Development Committee was taken by elected members, and that is quite properly the approach taken in the standing orders.
So chief executive looking to come in?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Just in response to councillor McCready's question, I think Mr Presswood has highlighted that further reports will come back to committee, and officers are very clear that it is elected members that take those decisions. With regards to the first point that councillor McCready raised about the reference to risk, risk is something that this council has improved on quite significantly over the past eighteen to twenty-four months. And a further part of that improvement will be looking at the integrated impact assessment that will be completed, and it's a review that's currently ongoing, has been hampered slightly by the emergency efforts of COVID and the council's response to the pandemic. But just to give councillor McCready that assurance that we will be picking in, picking up when we're looking at that assessment, how risk features into that, and how then that will be built into committee reports, given our approach to risk where we now have a corporate risk register as well as surface risk registers. So that's something that officers are aware of and will come shortly back to committee.
Okay, hopefully that goes some way towards pointing you in the right direction.
I think I was short, didn't you, Neil? Thanks.
councillor Scott, no, it's Short, sorry.
Thank you. As a councillor who sits in the middle of the town, I'm just hoping that some of you who's on the outline areas are going to be watching for the four horsemen. We've been talking about COVID for nearly the last year, and all of a sudden, it's all about the weather. And I just, I would like to echo what Bailey Keenan said with regards to the work that's ongoing. However, I would also like to bring up the fraud section with regards to COVID. Obviously, we're in a situation that millions of pounds are coming from central government, and we as an organisation are paying them out to businesses. And there is obviously due diligence, and I've got to pay tribute to the members of staff who have basically picked up and gone from their day job to do something completely different. I just actually had an email with regards to one of my constituents, and it says that not the right grant that's been applied for, however, if they go and they check with another grant, due diligence is obviously there, but with regards to fraud and COVID and the money that's going out, can you explain a little bit about how we are working through that progress and the checks and balances? And are we quite comfortable that we are doing things the way that it should be in the time constraints that, of course, the businesses are screaming for? And also, from the point of view of society, I do hope that if businesses find that they weren't in the right direction and they did get that money, that we're not going to create suddenly these monsters that we hear about when it comes to the welfare street, because these are businesses that have never needed to deal with this, and we're all just trying our best to keep everybody going in this current climate.
Someone able to give councillor Short an answer? Greg?
Yeah, thanks, convener. So I would be start off and then pass over potentially to Pamela. So within each of the grant schemes, it's important that we remember that we're administering on behalf of the Scottish Government, there'll be clear criteria that are in place, there'll be information that will tie back maybe perhaps to the electoral, the list for ratable values and who's in ratable occupation, along with information that I'm trading, bank statements, et cetera. So the process that's in place involves internal audit and being, taking a review of some of the controls. But as councillor Short outlined, the speed at which some of these schemes have had to be moved forward at, then we just have to be mindful that in some cases, we may have had applications that perhaps could have been fraudulent, which I'm hoping not to be the case. So going forward, convener, what we look to do is any cases where we suspect there to be fraud, we will pass over to our in-house corporate fraud team, who will investigate that, and where appropriate, will try to recover that money. There are a number of controls in place within the council, such as different people approving claims, different people approving payments, and then segregation of duties through, for example, the corporate services team and also the corporate finance team. So we try where possible to build in that level of control and assurance to make sure that we mitigate and reduce any risk of payments. But given the scale of what we're administering, and I think at the moment, it could be in excess of thirty million pounds, then there could be cases, and if that happens, then we pass to the corporate fraud team, and then we'll try to recover any grant payments where we know have been made fraudulently, and if required, may refer on to Police Scotland.
So, does that help you, councillor Short?
It does. And as we are here and is obviously being recorded, et cetera, you would just like to put on record, because I see that both Jackie Capel and obviously Robin are on the call, just how much it's very much appreciated by us that your teams are working so hard in this direction, and also very, very responsive when questions are asked of elected members. Thank you so much.
Pamela, are you looking to add some more?
I was just going to add, I suppose, just linking into what Greg said about internal audits involvement. So the internal audit service did liaise with or is continually liaising as new grant funding becomes available with city development and corporate services, just to ensure that the processes that are set up to support the administration of the grants are robust and we aim to mitigate the risk of fraud. And also, on a daily basis, both city development and corporate services teams are liaising with the corporate fraud team even as early as the application stage to help them again mitigate the risk. So even prior to, you know, paying out a grant, then they would try and, they would liaise with the corporate fraud team to see if there was any information to assist in that decision-making process as well. And then probably lastly, just to say that the NFI, by any exercise that you'll all be aware of, will be capturing some data matches from these business grants going forward. So I know by then it'll be after the event, but it should pick up where grants have been paid that potentially shouldn't have been, and then, as Greg said, we can start to go down the recovery process. Thank you.
Can I maybe ask a couple of questions myself? One would be to follow on in relation to potential fraud out of the number and sheer volume of grants that we've dealt with on behalf of the Scottish Government. And if, you know, given the timescale that we've had to do things, find that there's been fraudulent claims, would there be any liability coming back to council on that? And if there is any money that's recovered, given that, you know, I suppose council have received very little payment from the Scottish Government for the sheer volume of grants that they've done and the effort that they've put in, is there any, should there be any recovery, is there any opportunity for some of that money, if it's recovered, to be coming back to council? Should they need to be putting that level of effort in? Looks like, you know, we would involve our corporate frauds team and the like in the best interest of no fraud. However, council look to be putting an awful lot of effort in to give money out on behalf of the Scottish Government without getting anything back in return. And if I can ask another question, and it's in relation to COVID risk in particular. It was, it was obviously individuals allowed out of hospital and were put into care homes, some of the care homes that we run ourselves, and increase the risk of COVID being spread among them. Whilst, you know, they're going to test and make sure that people don't come out like that in the future, or come out of hospital with a, with a clear test in the future. Should there be another pandemic, how have we captured the fact that there was an issue there and we should be looking out for it, should something like this crop up again? So is it down on our risk register somewhere? So if we're ever looking back at, how did we cope with a pandemic? How did we take the thing forward? And how do we best look at things so as that we hit the ground running and didn't fall into pitfalls that we fell into this time?
Convener Greg Golden wishes to answer question one and Vicky Aaron's question two.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, convener. So if I could answer, I think, questions one and two that relate to business grants, and then, as Mr Many has said, pass over to Vicky in relations to the lessons learned. In terms of liability, my understanding is that there's no liability on the council if a grant application has been dealt with incorrectly. My assurance on this is given the steps that I've outlined earlier, just in relation to the control mechanism that the council has in place. So I'm confident that there certainly wouldn't be any comeback to the council. In terms of the second point regarding fraud and the resources, I circulated to all twenty-nine elected members that there's been twelve million pounds worth of funding in Scotland to support the administration of the various grant schemes that we've been administering since back in March 2020. I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but it works out at around about two-hundred and fifty thousand pounds for Dundee shares. So that's something that you'll see included in future finance reports that will come to Policy and Resources Committee. My understanding is, and I'm happy to provide detail with this meeting, that is that if there is a successful recovery of a business grant, then there could be the opportunity for the council to retain an element or all of that grant, reflecting the fact that there has been significant resources went into recovering that through council staff, the details of which I don't have in front of me, but I'm happy to share with members of scrutiny after the meeting. So hopefully that gives you a response to question one and two, convener. And if you're agreeable, I'd pass over to Vicky in relation to the risk register. I think, convener, before passing over to Vicky, I would say that the council does have a COVID risk register also, and that's something that I'm sure that members will be aware of. And again, that's currently just been reviewed and will be considered by the council's incident management team tomorrow morning to make sure that all of the risks on there and the mitigation factors reflect the current status and challenges being faced by the pandemic. So I thought it was important just to outline to you that we are very aware of our COVID risk and are monitoring that currently. So I'll just pass over to Vicky, convener, if that's acceptable to you.
Thanks for that. Okay, Vicky?
Thank you, convener. So just first of all, I wondered if it'd be helpful to provide some clarity on the example given around the transfers to care homes, because there was, quite rightly, quite a lot of attention on some of those transfers earlier on in the pandemic in 2020. And it was just to record for the record that Dundee, as a partnership, was processing quite robust arrangements for any transfers in care, including a testing regime earlier than we were directed to by Scottish Government. And the subsequent report, which was issued by Public Health Scotland colleagues, did not find a significant link between hospital and care home transfers, particularly within Dundee, and some of the outbreaks which we've witnessed. In fact, we've, we've obviously witnessed outbreaks throughout the pandemic, so I thought it was important just to clarify that. But the main point, and coming back to Greg's input also, is that we have quite a robust process in place in terms of capturing any of the risks identified through the COVID pandemic period. These are formally recorded through every incident management team that's held in connection with any particular outbreak, but also particularly as policy has changed and guidance has changed in terms of how we should practise. Those have been logged if we've identified any significant risk against our current working practices. Building on that also, I think it's fair to say that some of our care pathways have now been permanently changed to reflect testing for COVID, but also for ensuring that we've got all of the other mitigating actions in place when it comes to providing a full pathway of care for the individual concerned. So it's a continuous learning process, but I think some of the learning we've developed throughout the pandemic will now almost be a permanent feature in terms of the way that we function in the future. So I hope that gives some assurance.
Thanks for that. It's good to hear that people in this area obviously went a bit beyond government guidance and probably protected a few people in our care homes. So that's, that's a good news story. Thanks for that. Okay, I think we'll move on to the next item then. Tracy?
Okay, item three is the internal audit reports, and you're asked to note these.
Do you want to say anything on these, Pamela?
Yeah, do you just want me to go through each one in turn, like I normally do?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I'll do that quite quickly. There's five internal audit reports this time around, none of them are any cause for concern, I would say. The first one is a follow-up review of business continuity. This is a second formal follow-up of the previous report. It was scheduled because of its importance and also because at the time of the last follow-up in June seventeen, implementation of the recommendations at that stage was at an early point in progress. The follow-up has concluded that while some action's been taken to strengthen the control weaknesses highlighted in the original report, that some further work is needed. There's still one recommendation in particular with multiple elements to it that requires to be taken forward. The main outstanding elements relate to the development of formal business continuity plans at service level and the development of a business continuity strategy, which is also an action point you might be familiar with from the council's annual governance statement improvement agenda. I think really it's probably important to note that this is a great opportunity at the moment to take forward. I think really it's probably important to note that this is a great opportunity at the moment to take forward these areas and capture what we've been doing as an organisation to respond to the ongoing pandemic. And also, I suppose, factor in the lessons learned from both a local and national level. So there's been a revised implementation date for the formal business continuity plans at service level to be established and forwarded to the Community Safety and Resilience Manager for his review and comment from a corporate perspective.
Okay, Pamela, Billy McPherson's indicated he would like to ask the question on that report.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks indeed, and thanks to Pamela for that. And could I concur with the comments you and indeed councillor Short made in relation to the tremendous effort staff are making in challenging weather, but also in relation to business continuity, tremendous effort staff have made over the whole pandemic? Because I think this has been a test of business continuity. And I think the council has come out looking, you know, showing how flexible and how speedily it managed to ensure, you know, the business of the council continued. And, you know, we've already alluded to the level of homeworking. And that's only achieved if the structures are in place and the IT infrastructure, for that matter, is in place to allow that. And I think there's an awful lot of work being put in by staff to achieve that. And I think that that should be, that should very much be praised. My question's probably less for Pamela than for the chief executive. And it's really in relation to the input that's alluded to in this report about ensuring that the lessons from the COVID-19 pandemic are reflected in business continuity arrangements. That's obviously a very sensible thing to ensure is done. But what I'd be really interested to know is, I assume that there will be some sharing of that information with elected members. I think it would be really useful for us to know exactly the ways in which business continuity plans are being updated and any changes that are happening in relation to the lessons that we've learned from the pandemic. And I think that is something that I would be very interested in seeing in time. And I was just really wondering, if the chief executive could assure us that the major areas of where the conclusions have been drawn can be shared with elected members.
Greg?
Yep, thanks, Convenor. I'm happy to provide Bailey McPherson with that assurance. There's been a number of lessons learned and ways in which we have made systems more resilient and had to adapt, but also enhanced partnership working through our partners, through their local resilience partnership, but also through third involuntary sectors. So once we work through those details, and I'm just mindful that we're still in the middle of the pandemic, then certainly you have my assurance that we will look to share those with elected members.
That's appreciated. Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item then, Pamela, as no one else indicated.
Thank you. So the second report is on the capital plan, where we carried out a review to assess the monitoring and reporting arrangements in place at both a corporate and service level for the general services capital programme within the capital plan. We have concluded, you'll see from the report, that the work carried out, from the work carried out, sorry, that we've said there is a sound system of control there. More specifically, that there is monitoring and scrutiny at appropriate levels, including by the CMT Capital Monitoring Group and PNR Committee. There was only one minor improvement opportunity identified around incorporating the process notes, which are in place into the budget control manual. So nothing to worry about there.
There doesn't appear to be any questions on that, so we'll move on.
Thank you. The next report is a follow up review of transformational change. So the review was to assess whether or not the recommendations agreed by management previously. An internal audit report 201901 had been implemented within the given time scales. We've concluded that while some action has been taken by management, there's still some recommendations that require to be implemented. And the main areas that still require to be taken forward are around project management training, development of a specific risk register and frequency of reporting to committee. What I would say is that the team responsible for taking forward these actions has been heavily involved in assisting the council in its COVID-19 response. And that is why some of these have been delayed. I am confident that the outstanding areas will be taken forward as agreed by the end of July this year.
Yeah, there appear to be any questions on that report as well, so we'll move on again. Thank you.
Thank you. The next report is a follow up review of the Out of Our Service managed by the council's Children and Families Service. So the main objective of the follow up was to assess whether, again, the recommendations previously agreed by management this time, an internal audit report number 201708 had been taken forward as agreed. This is a very positive report where we have given full assurance. So what we're seeing is from the follow up work that we've undertaken, we've concluded that the actions that have been taken by management have addressed all of the control weaknesses highlighted in the original review, which is really good news.
I've got a question from Bailey McPherson, but perhaps if there's someone on the call, if they could give perhaps the committee an oversight of some of the work that goes on within the Out of Our Service so as we have a better understanding of what the Out of Our Service covers, I think would be useful. I'll bring Bailey McPherson in with his question first.
Thanks for that, Convenor. Now, in a way, you've sort of slightly touched on my question. I noticed Derek Atkins on the call. And my question's really in relation to the level of referrals and staffing levels and so on that the Out of Our Service has. I appreciate some of the, some of the work will be particularly challenging. You know, the report itself alludes to potentially violent persons, the potentially violent person's database and so on. To understand the challenges that Derek and colleagues will face in managing this. And I was just really wondering if Derek could give us an indication as to, for example, the level of referrals that the Out of Our Service perhaps receives over a particular period of time.
Okay, we'll go for that, Derek, in the meantime.
Yes, thanks for that. Basically, the service covers Dundee and Angus, so it's quite a wide ranging service. It covers also child and adult protection. But as well as that, all the supports that go underneath that as well. So just in answer to Bailey McPherson's question, I think the last annual report was something like 1,800 referrals a year. But they are spread across the, if you like, the four areas of Dundee, Angus, children's and adults. They're a wide range, and I suppose to answer Billy Keenan's question, the type of scenarios that we have, and it can be, you know, obviously it's evenings and weekends. It can be, you know, anything from anywhere. Sort of scenarios that are about the police calling us because they have perhaps parents who are intoxicated in charge of a child. So the criminal side would be dealt with by the police and we would pick up the, if you like, the child welfare protection side where we'd usually liaise with families to try and find a place for that child to go. The vulnerable elderly is quite often, or vulnerable adults, including elderly persons, is quite a kind of regular source of referral. For example, scenarios where there's perhaps vulnerable adults with poor home conditions. We'll deal with these alongside community alarm and perhaps be involved in, for example, intensive visiting until perhaps we might be looking for respite for somebody. Or can we look at an enhanced, sort of increased intensive care package until the daytime services can pick that up and assess it properly? And I suppose the protection element is always a feature of our work as well. So we'll have a mixture of social work and support staff on shift at any time. For example, an example recently of a care at home provider who reported some concerns about abuse by a family member. We worked with the police on that one to make sure that this was looked into and investigated, but also that that vulnerable adult received suitable care elsewhere in the family. So that's just a few examples of the kind of work that they do.
Okay, thanks for that. There's a few other questions coming in. Councillor Short?
Thank you, Convenor. And this is very much me being a pedant. And it's the first time I've ever noticed something like this, but it actually discusses her team throughout the report. And I just would have thought that this would be one of those instances when it was their team, a little bit like a whodunit, so that it doesn't matter who's in the role, their team will act accordingly. And just to degender the position effectively, is that not something that we would work to do across reporting like this?
I'll ask some officer to look at that for the future.
Thank you.
I'm sure those listening will try to address that. Councillor Rendell?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. It was really just a question around the, you know, the potentially violent person's database. I didn't know that that existed. And I had done a couple of visits to constituents about certain things. It turned out one of them was on this database. And I just wondered, it's mentioning, you know, that this database should be made available, made available to staff and children and families. I just wonder if it's something, I know it's, you know, we're not doing any visits just now, so it's not relevant at the moment. But for a new intake of councillor, say, next year, I think it should be part of any training that they have, they have knowledge of that database, because that's something, as I say, I didn't know about. So it was just really a comment there.
I mean, I was aware of the database and obviously I can access or get access to it through using our secretarial support to make the inquiry elsewhere for people. But and obviously our group are aware of the database. But I think the last, the chief executive perhaps to put an email around people so as to give people a reminder. So it's something that you obviously have brought up. It's a concern. There's no point of putting individual, whether that be a councillor or anyone else at risk by going along to a door where someone could be potentially violent.
Yeah, thank you.
Chief Executive, happy to take that on board?
Absolutely, Convenor, happy to do that.
Okay, and you'll look at the report in relation to the comments made by councillor Short?
Yes, happy with that as well, Convenor.
And I'll pick them up once I get my diversity training that you're going to organise. Okay, thanks for that. Is this report agreed?
There was one last one, sorry.
It's all right.
It's the follow up review of housing capital plan. So that was to assess whether the recommendations agreed by management in 201804 internal audit report had been implemented as agreed. And again, this is a very positive report. We've given it full assurance and stated that all actions taken by management have addressed the control weaknesses highlighted in the previous review.
Good. Any questions on that report? Doesn't appear to be. Derek, can I maybe ask you to pass on our good wishes to the staff? And we appreciate the job that they do on behalf of the citizens of Dundee and us as councils.
Yes, I will do. Thank you.
Cheers. Okay, is that report agreed? Yeah? Okay.
Okay, that takes us on to item four, which is the Dundee Integration Joint Board Internal Audit Report. You have this before you for information.
Does anyone want to make a comment on the report?
Pamela Redpath wishes to comment, Convenor.
Pamela, you. Don't say much on it, yeah?
Yeah, thank you very much. Just a really quick introduction really to the report. So as Tracy said, it's a Dundee IGB report. The focus of the report is on finance. It was submitted to the Performance and Audit Committee on the 3rd of February this year. The overall objective of the review, you can find at paragraph 4.2 of the covering report. So basically, the overall objective of the audit was to review the arrangements established to control and mitigate risks. One, restrictions on public sector funding. And two, unable to maintain IGB spend from the high level risk register. So really looking at the arrangements in place for the delivery of the recommendations arising from the ministerial steering group's self evaluation for the review of progress with integration of health and social care as it relates to financial planning and management. And also reviewing the recommendations arising from Audit Scotland's annual audit reports from 1718 and 1819 to determine the progress made in completing the recommendations made as it relates again to financial planning and management. So the audit opinion given following conclusion of the work is that of limited assurance. And you'll see at paragraph six on page two of the appendix, along with a definition that the limited assurance was given. Basically, what was found that it was that there were a number of financially related actions highlighted in both the MSG self evaluation and external audit annual reports that had not been taken forward as agreed. And I suppose in addition to that, the Transformation and Service redesign internal audit report had not actually been incorporated onto the governance action plan, which is the mechanism that the IGB uses to monitor implementation of these sorts of recommendations. So an action plan has been agreed to address the areas that were identified in the review. And you can find that action plan on pages five to seven, along with the management responses and timelines in relation to each of the recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, councillor McCready?
Yeah, thanks very much, Convenor, and thanks to Pamela for that introduction. I think that was, that was helpful. I suppose my question, I mean, I know that the answer to some extent is going to be, but I mean, if this was a, if this was a company or a third sector organisation that was continually getting this kind of audit report, Dundee City Council would not do business with them. So I kind of know that we're forced by legislation to do business with them, as it were, and to provide joint services. But I do wonder, you know, how long we can go on with this, with the continual issues around audit and around governance issues and around the budget for the IGB. So I just wondered if any officers have got any views on, are there any alternatives for Dundee City Council to find a better partner? Or are there any alternatives, any options for Dundee City Council to make its case much more strongly to the Scottish government about the unsatisfactory nature of what's going on here? And if there isn't, you know, it does slightly beg the question of, you know, to some extent, what's the point of telling us this stuff if we can't do very much about it? But I mean, having expressed that level of unhappiness, I would say, you know, that I recognise the officers, both from the city council and the IGB, you know, are recognising that there are issues there that need to be sorted. But I mean, I think, you know, without being too grumpy about it, I think we can't, you know, we can't go on getting reports like this year after year after year. Thanks, Convenor.
Okay, is there any officer prepared to come in?
Thanks, Convenor. So if I can just start off the discussion and then there's Vicky Irons and I think Dave Berry, who's on the call. So just in response to councillor McCready's question, I think the context which we're operating has to be acknowledged that there has been a significant period of time for the last 10 months where the Health and Social Care Partnership have been responding to events that, despite having good plans in place, which we've discussed, have moved our focus about dealing with the pandemic, such as setting up testing for staff, testing for residents, and most latterly, the establishment and running of a mass vaccination centre. However, setting those issues aside, there are some clear points which have been identified within this internal audit report. And those need to be delivered and those need to be actioned and they need to be actioned at pace. So what has happened is additional resource has been recruited into particularly the finance team within the Health and Social Care Partnership. And Dave Berry may want to just update elected members on that. And there will also be further review and scrutiny of this by myself and the chief executive of NHS Tayside to ensure that we are supporting the IGB to deliver on the actions, both from the action plans that are submitted from internal audit but also external audit. So greater scrutiny and support so that you don't find further reports coming back to scrutiny committee or indeed the performance and audit committee of the IGB with actions that haven't been implemented. In terms of the first part of the query, do we have a choice? Well, my understanding is no, we don't have a choice with the legislation. And that's why the IGB is a partnership and with the way it's constituted and set up. So elected members have my assurance that we will work with Vicky and Dave and Diane and the rest of the management team to ensure that we support and deliver on the actions and the points that have been addressed as highlighted within the report. So I thought, Convenor, it was worth saying that. And I'll hopefully allow, you'll allow Vicky or Dave So I thought convenor, it was worth saying that and I'll hopefully allow, you'll allow Vicky or Dave to come in just in particular responses convenor, but I'll leave that for you to bring those officers in if you feel appropriate.
Yep. And Vicky, you've got your hand up. Are you looking to make a comment?
Yes, thanks convenor. And I'm sure Dave will come in and any specifics because he's also taken our Performance and Audit Committee through the report, as was mentioned earlier on this month. So a couple of things from me. And yeah, quite hard to hear some of the comments just made in terms of the performance of the IGB. I think we, we need to be clear in terms of this particular report. There's a heavy reference to the ministerial steering group recommendations that were, were made some time ago. And that was really to assess progress of integration and a whole range of the contributing systems, including the financial processes, budget settlement and financial controls. And I won't necessarily go back to, to that report because it was obviously some time ago. I think it's pretty clear though, that many of those recommendations are not necessarily just for the IGB itself, but also for the partner bodies which we are formed from. And much of the progress that we've needed to see across the systems within the IGB are entirely dependent on the systems of both NHS Tayside and Dundee City Council as well. So there has been some lack of progress with some of those recommendations. But I certainly as the new chief officer, don't have any concerns about our ability to fulfil all of those recommendations in full. And we have developed an action plan this year, despite being in a pandemic, that will get us to a better place. And I guess that's just the, the other thing I wanted to mention on committee today. And that is around our governing processes and all of our management controls that are in place, including financial controls. Did a pretty thorough analysis of those when I came into post last February with, with Dave and Diane and the other officers. And I am certainly assured that we've got all the right processes in place. And I would genuinely hope if you could reflect back on the performance of the partnership, particularly over the pandemic, where we have delivered against all of our key performance indicators. In some areas, we are the best in Scotland, where we've delivered financial balance this year, that you can be assured that we have the right managerial processes and systems in place. I think you will see a change in terms of audit reports going forward. And I think that will be reflected in terms of all of the efforts that have gone in over the last year. So I hope that provides some assurance to committee members this afternoon. Dave, I know that you've probably got one or two bits and pieces you wanted to pick up. I know that sometimes the wording of the internal audit report itself can sting a bit, particularly comments which have been made about us not making progress throughout the pandemic period. Because I don't necessarily think that's a fair reflection either, but it is what it is. And we'll use the basis of this report to improve for the future. If it's okay with you convenor, I'll hand over to Dave.
Yeah, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Thanks convenor. Thanks Vicky. And probably not an awful lot more to kind of add to what Vicky's and just kind of fed back to the, the committee just now. I think in terms of kind of going back to Greg's point about additional capacity, we have now got in post an effective deputy chief finance officer who will be kind of supporting us and taking forward a lot of these actions, particularly around the finance side of things. And we have kind of looked at, and we're kind of currently kind of going through a senior management team kind of restructure as well to kind of get that additional management capacity which is needed to drive forward some of the changes that are put in, that have been put in place. So there is a bit of a kind of theme, as councillor McCready has kind of highlighted. So there's been a kind of, I think, three reports that have come to this committee recently that have had a very similar theme around them in terms of not kind of picking up and delivering on a number of the governance action points that are being raised. And part of that has been about management capacity, capacity to respond, the complexities of environment which the IGB kind of works in, particularly around the sort of governance structure. But as Vicky's kind of highlighted, we've got, we've got kind of assurance from our own sort of review that we've got the kind of, the basis to kind of, to improve upon. We've now got the capacity within the management team to do that. And as Vicky says, we should see a change in the kind of, the focus of these reports going forward. So hopefully it does give you more assurance than you've, you've had up to date.
Councillor McCready?
No, I think that's, I think that's, that's welcome. It's good to hear the officers giving us that assurance. I mean, and you know, I look forward to hopefully getting reports that reflect that, that progress has been made. And I would also acknowledge that absolutely, you know, the IGB has been at the, has been at the heart of some of the issues around dealing with the, with the pandemic. And that's clearly, you know, that is clearly an issue. But you know, I think we do need to take, that having been said, we do need to take governance seriously. But I do take, I do take the, I do take some reassurance from what the officers have said. Thanks.
Can Sephora bring yourself in councillor Short? Can I maybe ask the question of the chief executive? I'm just really wondering, as, as this is presented to council and it's presented to us as a scrutiny committee, and we could obviously, if we were of a mind to, have made recommendations. But we really need to get to the hub of the problem much quicker, as I think is councillor McCready's suggestion. So I'm wondering how reports can be addressed in the future so as it, you know, points the issues out much more succinctly. So that if it was a case that, you know, we were, we were needing to bolster up the management or, you know, a bring in additional staff or resources, that it's fairly obvious within the report or otherwise that we're needing to do such a thing. In which case it is upon us as councillors to try and make our share of that resource available.
Thanks convenor. Officers can speak to internal audit colleagues regarding format and pulling out of recommendations so that they're clear to scrutiny committee. However, there is a governance process that's in place, which would then allow Vicky as chief officer to direct the council around resourcing needing, should there be significant challenges or pressures that the IGB face. And that's something that's used with the council and indeed NHS. So just to give committee assurance that there is a governance framework in place, that if there was an issue around resources, that the IGB has a mechanism and tool at its disposal to do that. I probably need to speak also to Mr Many just to pick up on that point about how scrutiny might feature in that, given again, the separate performance and audit committee where the decisions and the recommendations have been taken through the IGB. So it's something that I would need to speak to both Vicky and Roger about, I think, to come back with a more fulsome answer for you.
I'm happy to, for that to be sort of taken away from here and dealt with. I know that right at the outset of this, Doug Cross, who was the chair of the scrutiny committee at IGB, met with me and at that stage, it was just an acknowledgement that we've got a scrutiny committee in place and there's good governance. I think, you know, given that, well, that's, that's been a few reports that didn't read too well. You know, it, it, it looks like something was needing to be addressed a time ago. Great that we've got the reassurance that we've had today. But you know, I, I, I think that we're, we're needing to look from the point of view of the type of report that council receives and the type of report that the scrutiny committee receives. So it'd be useful to hear that level of discussion with yourself.
Yeah, happy to have that discussion with you convenor.
Okay. Then councillor Short, sorry for kept you.
Not at all, not at all. I, I just wanted to come in and just remind everybody of that great day, April Fool's Day 2016, when both the IGB and my political career was born. And I, every day is a school day as far as I'm concerned. And I'm presuming if you take the NHS and a council social work department and try and put them together, there's got to have been a lot of learning in those last five years. And, and I personally am beginning to pick up some of the chains of the IGB. And I sat at a park and it took me about 45 minutes to actually work out that it was their version of the scrutiny committee. And I just wondered if perhaps we can have a bit of an idea as to whether COVID, being the council being such fleet of foot, has COVID also meant that the IGB has been able to become much more fleet of foot? And you've become much more homogeneous because of the fact that you've had to do things so quickly and work across it. And obviously, what a baptism of fire for Vicky going into it within a month and being plunged into a pandemic. Again, hats off to everybody for everything that you've done.
Okay, Vicky, you looking to come in, make a comment? Ideal opportunity to say how marvellous you are.
No, sorry, that was a legacy hand, but I would never dream of saying how marvellous you are.
But has, has there been lessons learned, do you think? And the pandemic, has, has it pulled you together as organisations and realised just how, how well you can work together?
I think, you know, without shadow of a doubt, and this was probably some of the underpinning reason for the ministerial steering group meeting and providing the report that they did. There is, there is an element of clunkiness to the fact that as an integration joint board, we, we work with both systems and therefore have processes and systems to work through and the annual process of budget settlement and everything else. And I think with the onset of the pandemic last year, quite a lot of that clunkiness had to go out the window. And to a certain extent, all systems, so all partners. And that extent, that extends beyond statutory partners. That includes, you know, the independent sector and the third sector as well, had to come together to mobilise and do the right thing in terms of service plans. So that's definitely been a feature since the beginning of the pandemic. So it's perhaps made some of the original MSG recommendations rather redundant in terms of increasing the pace of integration or increasing the pace of decision-making, for instance. And certainly the report itself, hopefully, if, if, you know, if, if you can search for the good within the report, it does say that there have been significant additional financial links made across the NHS board, the local authority and the IGB throughout this process. So I think certainly some of the issues which got in the way of progress of integration previously have been obliterated, I guess, as a result of the emergency response. And I think certainly Greg and I and Grant are pretty keen that we retain some of those lessons learnt and the good elements which have been made possible, you know, through a more urgent response. And that we retain those in terms of working arrangements for moving forward. So if that's the kind of thing you're alluding to, then yeah, I think that's all been made possible as a result of this.
Yeah, 100%. Convenor, do you mind if I come in again?
Yeah.
I just, I just also wanted to say thank you for the briefings that we've had, specifically something like mental health, which I know that there's an expectation across the populace of the city that the answers all lie at the bottom of our fingertips because we are councillors and we, we do everything, obviously. And actually just to have that access to understand better and hopefully as we go along, we will get more of those opportunities just to see where it all lies. So again, thank you for that opportunity. It's very much appreciated.
Okay, thanks for that. Okay, Tracy, next item then.
Okay, the final item on the agenda, item five is the internal audit plan progress report. And again, this is for information.
You, you want to say anything Pamela?
Yeah, just, just very quickly, if that's okay. So this is a standard report that I bring to scrutiny committee and just provide you with an update on progress towards delivering the plan, this time 2021 internal audit plan. Some key points for you though, I'm still confident at the moment, with the exception of a couple of small number of assignments, that the majority of the plan will be delivered and be able to feed into my annual governance statement, eh, and, and to my governance statement, sorry, in June. The two assignments that I know of that won't progress at the moment are electoral registration because key staff who would be involved in assisting us throughout the review are concentrating on preparing for the May elections, as I'm sure you can appreciate. And the other one that we know that we'll need to delay is on prescribed medication. Because obviously the current environment doesn't lend itself to us entering any establishments to review the arrangements that are in place for administering medication and storing it, et cetera. One of the assignments that I know that you've all been interested in before, and certainly at least one of you have asked about, is homelessness. So it's just to give you an update on that, to let you know that the audit brief has been agreed with the client and the field work has actually started already. And yeah, those are probably the key things that I wanted to bring to your attention. I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
First question in from Bailey McPherson.
Thanks convenor. Just a brief question in relation to the proposed governance review in relation to project management. And this is in relation to key ICT projects. I'm just really wondering, you know, I, I, I heard what you said in relation to an assurance about, you know, progress other than, you know, lack of electoral registration for reasons we can, we can understand. In this case, I think this one is really important. There's been very major ICT projects over the past year, you know, the, the migration of the email to a new system, the large scale rollout of Microsoft Teams for very obvious reasons, obviously heavy use of remote access due to the homeworking. And I was just really wondering if Pamela can provide some sort of update as to how, how soon will we concede progress in that respect?
Thank you for your question. So I did catch up with the principal internal auditor before I came on the call today to find out where we were at with some reviews, one of which was project management. So the project management review is part of the KPMG portfolio. We're not at a stage at the moment where that is actually scheduled in, but I am hoping that that will be delivered and feed into my assurance statement in June. But I don't have any specific timeframes at the moment. We're liaising actively with services just now to get reviews scheduled in so that the field work can kick off at the most opportune time for the service. And, and that is something that I'll be picking up on shortly.
Okay, well, thanks for that. And, and obviously we'll, I'll wait to hear further because obviously we will get your further update at the, at the June meeting. So grateful for that.
Thank you.
Good councillor McCready?
Thanks very much. I've got a couple of questions. My first one was on, I think on page 67, it talks, talks about the, the plans to look at purchasing and stocks and inventories, inventories. And I think if I'm reading the colour coding correctly, that it's not yet commenced. But I think as we discussed in the earlier report around the risk that fraud and corruption are, are major issues that we're concerned about, just get a little bit of assurance that, that there will be progress on those two. Because I mean, mostly, I think they may, they may impact on, on that level of that issue around fraud and corruption that we said was a risk earlier in the meeting. And I have another question, which is separate, if that's okay convenor.
Sure.
Thanks. So I didn't pick up the first review. What was the first one? Sorry that you said?
The one on purchasing is on page 67, they're both on page 67. There's one on purchasing and there's one on stocks and inventories.
Yeah. So the stocks and inventories is in the plan every year and that normally relates to year end work. So that wouldn't commence until around the year end. Obviously this year, we're not sure what position we're going to be in in terms of arrangement or our local protection levels. So we don't know whether we would be in a position to visit anywhere. We need to wait and see. If we can't, then what I'm proposing is that we'll review the procedures that the services have put in place for arriving at their stock figures. So we're working with corporate finance at the moment on that. We've fed back some information to the senior manager responsible for that within corporate finance. In relation to purchasing, that is an area again, that I would like, that I intend on taking forward, but hasn't been scheduled in yet.
Okay, I think that, that's, that's very helpful. I mean, and I think it's obviously important that we, that in terms of stocks, that we do find a way of, of trying to do an audit and that so that, so that we can have some reassurance that, that nothing untoward is happening. But I hear what you've said and I think that's helpful. If I can convenor, can I ask my, my other question, which perhaps isn't, isn't particularly a question, I don't think for Ms Redpath, but is a, a, a question probably for other officers. I heard what was said about not being able to take forward the review on electoral registration. But I just wonder if, if they felt it was appropriate, if officers who are charged with, you know, carrying out electoral registration could give us an update on what the impact has been of, of COVID-19. And because, I mean, I understand, I think vague, from a vague memory, I think there is, there have been some changes in terms of the legislation and stuff like that. And how, I just wanted to know how, how or if the kind of COVID regulations have impacted on some of the normal activities that might have been done to promote electoral registration in the city.
As I guess we're getting Mr Many for that one.
Thank you, convenor. Just to confirm to councillor McCready that homeworking has not impacted in any way on electoral registration. And as elected members may be aware, a campaign has begun to remind everyone that the elections will be taking place soon, not just from the point of view of electoral registration, but also from the point of view of applying for absent votes, should people wish to do so.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Cheers. Councillor Short?
Yeah, again, it was just an opportunity to play tribute to Pamela and her team. There must be lots of aspects of the work that she had planned, which they were unable to do due to the fact that they can't get in and nosy around basically all those services that they may have approached. But instead, they've had to look at very different things because of the current situation. So you will know yourself, convenor, that the scrutiny committee was the first of the committees that actually went online. I think it was the 24th of June last summer and has continued to carry through. And I know that other local authorities, quite local to us, have taken a wee bit of a back seat. But I think we're very fortunate. We still do have that opportunity to scrutinise regularly. And I appreciate that the team are in the background, giving us that chance to be here and look at how the strategies become operational and actually how they've been delivered.
I'm sure they've got an answer for that, but certainly welcome the comment. I was thinking that you're a good wee date, so I might just tell you when my birthday is so as you could send me a card.
Do you know what? The 24th of June is my birthday.
So did. Well, just better write that down though. I'm too old for remembering things.
Kevin, I know yours as well. It's the same as your grandson's.
Exactly. Okay. Okay, is that business taken care of? I mean, I'm sure that Pamela could be reassuring you that she's not been sitting about and actually been able to get into many things that, you know, that would surprise the others that no doubt didn't particularly want Pamela there looking. But in the interest of scrutiny and audit, and she's done a great job, as you say. Okay, is that the business taken care of?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you very much then. Thanks for having me for your time. Enjoy the rest of your day. Snowball fighting and sledging.
Speak for yourself.